All right, I would like to call the meeting to order if people can please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag.
Of the United States of America. And to the Republic For which it stands. One nation Under God Indivisible With liberty And justice For all.
Okay, our first order of business is approval of the December 2nd minutes, which is last week. I have a motion to approve the December 2nd minutes.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Alden, favor, Julia.
Hi.
Matt.
Hi.
Shannon.
Hi.
And Kelly.
Aye.
Okay. So reports for the school committee. Dr. Antonucci.
Don't have anything tonight.
Okay. Dr. Klingerman.
Yes, I'll just have a brief announcement about MCAS and access testing this evening. Back in September, you may remember that the Department of Education announced that the initial testing schedule for MCAS and for access testing for 2020, 2021 would include a special administration of high school ELA and math tests in January and February for students in grades 11 and 12. And they did tell us that they would adjust that plan throughout the year as needed. So we found out this week that students in grades 11, which is class of 2022, will no longer participate in testing during the January, February window. And this testing in ELA and math is being postponed until later in the school year. And then we also found out this week that our access testing, which our English learners participate in at every level throughout during, once during the year has been extended. So we have the ability to test our English learners anytime between January and May this year. So we were glad to hear that these adjustments were made this week. So I just wanted to let the committee know that there, that is happening.
Great.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think I told somebody erroneously that there was going to be no MCAS this year. Wishful thinking. All right, Katie Blake.
I am going to pass for tonight.
Okay. And then for me, I don't really have anything, but I just, I did, I got to sit with my seventh grader today and she was doing social studies and it was a current event article and she actually chose one on the impact of the coronavirus nationwide on the field of education. And just the amount of kids who are fully remote. And it was basically first term, there have been more failing grades than ever across the nation. And it cited, it was mostly like South Carolina, New Mexico, and it was kids, it's just they, they don't have access or they don't even know how to get on Zoom. So teachers were meeting them in parking lots and, you know, and one of the questions she had was what's the long-term impact? And I was saying, you know, it's, it's going to affect these kids next year. And I said, you know, think of how lucky we are that you have been in school and you've had contact with your teachers and you have a curriculum and we have Wi-Fi. And it was really interesting discussion for a 13-year-old. So I thought it was pretty cool. So I just love everything that we're doing here. Okay, so John, take away the hybrid learning model.
Yeah. So I'm going to print you this off. So, um, yeah, first, I actually want to just thank the committee for shifting their schedule. We're supposed to set schedule to meet next week and we kind of wanted to push this conference, this particular conversation up a little sooner. So I appreciate your flexibility. And this, this conversation tonight is about kind of next steps, you know? And, and we've had so much discussion over the last month about our learning model and whether it transitioned, how to transition, how long it would take to transition into, the conversation has really been around, around full in-person. And I'd say this, you know, we still have really significant concerns about a full in-person return. And I'm going to throw a date out. I do think that there is room for a conversation at least about putting a target out there or a goal out there for when we could get back. You know, unfortunately, the, the health data is not looking good. I'm stating the obvious. Seems to getting, seems to getting worse and worse throughout the state and throughout the country. But, you know, it's going to come down to at some point, you know, what risks are we willing to live with? Because what we do know is that kids are suffering greatly. Kelly, you mentioned around the country, certainly around the state and certainly in Duxbury. And so, you know, it's going to be a hard conversation we're going to have to have at some point about, about risks and what's worse, you know, the facts, the fact that kids are suffering and falling behind and families are struggling with, you know, increased risks with more people in the building, right? I mean, so that's kind of the, the big picture context. And, you know, I think it's, it's time to start having that conversation and start moving, you know, forward. We do think though, there's an in-between step that's critical. We know, we've had our, we've had our high needs learners, designated high needs learners in, in four days since the beginning of school. And those are our kind of at most, our most at-risk kids. And we went through a whole process to identify who those kids were. We're looking at though, the next step, knowing that our students, generalizing here a little bit, but knowing that our students who have IEPs or in some cases 504s are most likely and absolutely probably struggling the most, you know, in the, in the hybrid learning model. And I probably argue that their families are also struggling the most. There's a reason why kids have individualized education plans and, and 504s. So we started kind of aggressively looking at, you know, whether it was feasible to bring back every student who has an IEP or 504 as soon as possible. And we want to be aggressive about it. We, we kind of feel that, you know, every day that passes is a day, it's kind of maybe a missed opportunity. At the same time, there's still a lot of logistical hurdles and scheduling concerns and staffing issues that we need to, we need to kind of wrestle with. So we're here tonight to kind of put that idea on the table to bring back all of our students on IEPs or 504s. We originally wanted to do it next week. We had kind of wanted to take a real big bite at the apple, kind of a rip the Band-Aid off approach a little bit before the, before the winter break. And we've had dozens upon dozens of conversations and staff meetings over the last three days. And it just, it's not the right decision to do it that, that soon. So what we are looking at though, is to bring back students the first day after winter break, which is Monday, January 4th. It's only, we had talked about next Thursday possibly. It's only a difference of four days, four school days, and I don't want to minimize those four days. But we just think that the, there wasn't enough gain for what kind of level of upheaval it was going to cause. And honestly, it's kind of a, there's a lot of anxiety around it for all the reasons that we've been talking about here, you know, for the last couple of months. So we have the principals here tonight to talk about some of the challenges, but also what that would look like, you know, how many kids, how many kids it impacts? And what it will take to get those students back to school on, on Monday, January 4th. And also put out there, and this is still a bit, bit of a, bit of a goal, maybe a hope. But I also want to put out there, you know, February 1st as kind of a grand, a grand target, you know, for a full in-person return, at least for the, our youngest learners. We still continue to prioritize our youngest learners. So we're talking about, again, this grand goal of February 1st. We're looking at, could we bring back our, our youngest students, maybe all of our elementary students at that date? I'll be honest with you, I'm not sure it's possible. Nothing's really changed with the state and nothing's really changed internally or locally. But I do think it's time to have a target with, as long as we're all on the same page that it may or may not happen. There's a lot of work to do to get there. So that's kind of where we are tonight. And I'm going to turn over the principals in a moment, but we're really excited about it. We do know that it, it poses a lot of questions and challenges, especially for our staff. And we truly, you know, respect their opinions and feelings on the matter. And one of the reasons we did pull back a little bit was, was based on the conversations we've had with our staff over the last couple of days. And they brought up very valid, very legitimate concerns. And at the end of the day, it just didn't seem smart or really frankly responsible to rush it. So again, especially the difference of only four days. Danielle, before I turn it over to the principals, do you have anything to add or improve on what I just said?
No, I think you said it really well. The only thing I would add is that I said this earlier today, I'm sorry for anyone that was with me and I'm repeating it. But I just think that being in this remote into the hybrid environment that we've been in since March was scariest and hardest for our students on IEPs and 504s because they have documented disability areas that they need specially designed instruction for. And what scared me as soon as we went into the remote is how we were going to accommodate our most challenging learners who need assistance at school. So I think our special education teachers have been, and our general ed as well, have been working miracles to try to accommodate the student, special education students learning over this time. And again, I think when you mentioned that there, we discussed it with the staff today that there were some obstacles that we need to overcome that are very legitimate in terms of kind of revamping an entire schedule that usually takes several weeks to do at the beginning of the school year. We're looking at starting over in a lot of areas. And so those are some of the things we want to work out in collaboration with our teachers because they are teaching to so many different groups right now and they're working on a cohort A, cohort B, and cohort C. And they've got high needs learners and they've got learners every which way that they're teaching synchronously and asynchronously. So we can't underestimate any of the work the teachers are doing this year to make this work. They're juggling so much. But our goal all along really has been to get as many students back in the building as we can safely during this challenging time. And it's just a fine balance that we're walking, trying to make the best decision for the students as well as keeping our staff safe. And so we're trying to get as much input and collaboration as we can. And we, we're just fortunate to be able to have such amazing staff here at school, at Duxbury Schools. And our DTA has been wonderful to work with. So when we hear from the principals today, they're going to highlight some of the challenges for making this happen, as well as some of the feedback that they received from the staff this week that we need to consider and make a solid plan moving forward in the next couple of weeks.
I just want to say one thanks Danielle. I just want to say one thing too about, you know, we, the question we're asked of us today. Kind of, you know, what now, like what, you know, what has changed? And the reality is nothing's really changed. In, in fact, again, the health data is kind of going in the wrong direction. But at the same time, there's been a bit of a narrative shift, I think, throughout the country. And you cannot turn on a television station or read the newspaper without virtually every member of the medical community suggesting now that it's reached crisis levels for students not, because students are not in school. And and again, it goes back to what I said about, you know, what risks are we, are we willing to live with? We, we're going to have to balance that. We're going to have to balance the risk of bringing a larger student population back in the building and kind of the risk associated with that, with the fact that there's near unanimity in the medical community. And by the way, we're all professional educators and we don't disagree that kids being at home is just a major problem in, in kind of reaching, you know, reaching kind of a crisis level. I don't think we're at a crisis level here in Duxbury per se. But so again, that's, it's one of these things where that is very consistent right now. And that's just something that we, we can't ignore and we don't want to ignore it. So, but again, we're kind of in, doing this balancing, this balancing act. So with that, if that's, that's a good enough, enough talk.
That, that, can I just ask one quick question before we turn it over to the principals, John? So, um, the difference of four days and the vacation, is it mostly a matter, or is it a matter mostly of Danielle, what you were suggesting just around the challenges of scheduling and starting over from a scheduling standpoint versus a, a sort of a safety concern in terms of like washing things down or moving sort of the deck chairs around and stuff like that? Is it more safety or is it more scheduling as far as the decision to change from Thursday to the 4th?
I think it's a combination of both, Matt, to be honest. I think that when we look, we have to really, over the next several weeks, pin down who will be attending school. We have families that may not opt to send their children in four days per week. And we, we might find that we have much of our student population that does take advantage of that option. So we have to look at what our concrete numbers are. Transportation, we have to look at furniture, we have to look at scheduling. We have to make sure classes that didn't have students on IEPs or 504s in on certain days of the week have support in those classrooms. And frankly, we have a million other details that our teachers are able to share with us when we get down to the level of, here's the number of students and who will be in your class four days a week now. And so there's just a lot of logistical issues to work out, especially with having students having snack and having lunch and all of the other pieces that go into a school day, especially when, when you're talking about safe distancing and masks on and masks off for eating. And so you'll hear from the principals what some of those issues that they have to overcome in the next couple of weeks will be.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. All right, principals, thanks for joining. Who's, who's kicking this off?
Usually Erin wins that.
Yeah. Yes, I'm going to start. Sarah, Sarah wins the screen chair award. Perfect. Okay. So thank you for having us again tonight. I'm going to really start by giving a very brief overview about the impact of this transition on Chandler School. So right now, we already have 20 students who are designated as high needs and come four days. And with this transition, we will have 56 additional students who will be invited to join us for four days. We will be prepared to send out a letter to families who are impacted by this tomorrow morning. And there will be a link to a survey to confirm whether families accept the invitation or not. And then we would ask families to confirm by next Tuesday, the 15th, so that we can prepare for which students will be joining us for four days on Monday, January 4th. There are some classrooms that will not add any additional students at this time, just based on the makeup of those classrooms. And there are some classrooms that will add up to six additional students. But with this addition of these 56 students, the highest number of students in any one classroom will be 14. So I think it's important to point out that the students that will be attending four days will be exposed to the same in-person teaching for two days in a row. Because if you remember, that is how our hybrid model works, where teachers are teaching the same content to A, to their A cohort and then to their B cohort. So if you think about being a student coming four days, you would be exposed to the same content two days in a row. So while this is a benefit to most students, there are definitely some students who wouldn't need that level of repeated instruction. And for those students, teachers, there will definitely be an increased level of planning that will need to take place to really ensure that students are engaged during the school day at an appropriate level so that everybody's getting the most out of their day. So this was definitely a point of discussion today when we met as a Chandler staff. Just that, you know, increased level of planning necessary for these scenarios. Because, you know, we do have some teachers that already have students designated as high needs coming four days a week that may, like I said before, benefit from the repeated instruction. But then some of the students we would be adding, you know, we would just need to make different plans for them and make sure that, you know, they're still learning at the pace with everybody else and, you know, aren't getting bored, seeing content two days in a row and all of those things. So that does come with some additional planning. The other concern that was brought up today is to just make sure that when we make this transition to, you know, begin to invite students back, that we can maintain our spacing for safety of the students and teachers, given that the class sizes are increasing a little bit. And I think given the timeline of after vacation, we can definitely begin planning right now with furniture moves and such things to make sure that we're spaced appropriately. So I think we'll be okay. And I am happy to answer any Chandler specific questions, or we can wait until the end. But I told you I was going to be brief.
But I had a question for the families who might respond to the survey and not take up the additional in-person schooling. Do they just remain as they are two days a week?
They would remain in their cohort. Yeah, and I think it's important to note for families who are listening, like if you're, if you're listening to us and you're considering whether this would be a good option or the right choice for your child, it's important to reach out to your classroom teacher to have that discussion with them, certainly to see, you know, what kind of impact the teacher believes it would have on the child.
And the other question I had was, as you mentioned spacing, I was wondering what, what you were aiming for with regard to spacing in the classroom?
In some classrooms, specifically our kindergarten classrooms, we've removed a lot of the tables out of those rooms over the summer. And so, you know, if we're increasing the number of students in the classroom, we would have to bring tables back and add additional Plexiglas to make sure that, you know, we're, we have enough spaces, physical spaces for kids. But also in our first and second grade classrooms, you know, there are some times when we may have to reorganize the furniture the way it's set up so that we are spaced apart. But I think, you know, we're still aiming for six feet when possible.
Great, thank you.
I have a question and Heather, this might be for you. If the kids are coming two days in a row, I'm assuming that, you know, they're getting services, the two days a week that they're coming. So do they get the same services two days in a row? Or is that something that's going to be individualized?
So what we, what we did when we set our original IEP service delivery grids, we have been writing the IEPs for a full year, like a typical school year. And then through what's called a distant learning plan, it was something that we issued to families in September. And what it did was if your child's in a remote model, this is what your services look like. This is how we're delivering that IEP. If your student's on a hybrid model, we talked about what services, we tried to prioritize as many special education services in person on the two days that the student is in school. And then there are some we need to do either asynchronous or Zoom on the days that the student is at home or remote. So if students are not changing their options, we're going to continue with the same way that we've been providing services. So students regardless are going to get all of their IEP services. So we'll follow up with families about what that will look like, kind of as we process through all of this. Does that make sense? Yeah?
Yes. I, I just basically it was, will they get the same, if they opt for four days, is it, they're going to get the same service Tuesday that they got Monday?
Yep.
And Friday that they got Thursday? Or is that evolving?
No, it's not even, it's, they have set schedules already of when the students get services to paste based upon their specific IEP. So it's not necessarily a repeat of services. We've already got a schedule that we're hoping to be able to maintain. And I think as we work our way through this, we'll have to see what the impact is on some of those. If there was something that was scheduled to be a Zoom remote or asynchronous, we'll, we're, we kind of have to get into it so we can work through it, so we know what changes might need to be made. But students will receive all of their IEP services.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, I think we can move on to Alden then.
Hey friends, okay, apologies in advance if you hear a piano playing, it's my daughter in the next room. This was maybe a mistake doing this from my house, but we'll see. Hopefully it's not too distracting. The, the plan and the effects on Alden School aren't altogether very different from Chandler School. We have a, a bit of a bigger number of students in effect. So we've identified an additional 89 in addition to the 31 high needs students we have right now, who'd be invited to attend four days based on, four days based on IP 504 accommodation plans. Like Erin, we are prepared to send out a letter Thursday morning with a link to a survey so that we can quantify exactly how many students we're talking about sort of actually planning for, how many are we actually going to get to get. And given that timeline of January 4th, I think we can start doing that. Impact on the classrooms, again, very similar, probably between zero and four, there are definitely some classes who this wouldn't affect at all. Some classes would be having an additional four students attending on the, on the currently remote days and, you know, becoming in-person days, average cohort size is about a little over 12. Our largest cohort would be 15, which is, if you've been in an Alden School classroom, that is right at the edge of being able to maintain a six-foot distance. That's going to involve removing some furniture from classrooms as I sort of transition right into some concerns that is definitely one of them. Some of the cohorts are getting pretty big. They fluctuate in size pretty greatly. We'll have cohorts of eight still with this plan and we'll have cohorts of 15. And that really, the reason for that is just really number of cohort C opt, you know, cohort C opting families in classrooms. And some have a lot and some don't have any. And so you end up with cohorts of very different sizes. You know, grade is sort of grade dependent as well. So I would say spacing is a concern. Storage of furniture is sort of a minor facilities concern. If you've been at Alden School in a while, and I don't know that any of you have, our team rooms look very different than they have in the past. They're pretty jammed with furniture, like stacked chairs and stacked desks. Plus we have the three storage containers outside. So it's a concern, but it's not one that's not, it's not one that we can't overcome. But, you know, we would, we'd be taking a tape measure and making sure we can, we can maintain a, a sufficient distance between students. And we talked a little bit about the sort of repeated exposure of the same instruction from day to day for some of the, for some of the students, just that, that, the planning for that for teachers. Teachers who are already, and I think we've said to this group before, that they're, they're pretty, they're pretty maxed out in terms of planning. And I think it's been mentioned at school committee a number of times that this is sort of, the hybrid model is the least optimal for, for teachers and, you know, for teachers to plan. It takes the most amount of work. And I would say this adds to it for sure. Because now there, there are additional students who are maybe repeating instruction who, you know, who knows what reason they're on a 504, for example. It might not really have anything to do with needing repeated instruction. So that's just something they're going to need to be thinking about that they didn't have to think about before. So. So that's Alden School.
All right.
No questions?
Yeah, happy to answer, happy to answer questions.
Nope, let's go to middle school.
Okay, great. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. So at DMS, we currently have just under 30 students identified as high needs students in four days for in-person instruction. And so with a look at all of our students on IEPs and 504s, we would be identifying an additional 106 about students who would be considered for four days of in-person instruction. So like Alden and Chandler, families of students identified for this would be contacted tomorrow via email. And we would be requesting that families confirm if their student would be returning for four days a week by next week, Wednesday. Within that letter, we will link a form to confirm that. And we're also asking families to confirm within that their transportation plans. Because bus capacity and the length of the bus route, there are some implications that may exist with these added students that we want to ensure we plan for. So with that data in hand, the students in this group would be returning for four days a week, beginning on January 4th. In order to determine the impact of this added group of students on our classrooms at DMS, we conducted an analysis of roster data for every course and section at DMS, which is about 348 sections total. And so we reviewed all the numbers as if every student of the 106 were to return to four days of in-person instruction. While most of our classes would be able to handle the increase in students in the classroom with their existing setup, there were some classrooms that may need some additional with their existing setup, there were some classrooms that may need some additional furniture or reconfiguration of the furniture. Um there's a potential uh need for some classroom changes due to the size of a certain classroom. So for instance, our our learning center rooms specifically are the smaller classrooms and um distancing effectively in those spaces we may need to think about. Um and we may have to add and reconfigure furniture in our team areas, which is where we've been managing our lunch. Um. At the middle school when students aren't able to eat outside, and it's finally gotten chilly enough out that um we're using those spaces more frequently. Uh I wanted to note for a sense of spacing at DMS that if all of these hundred and six students returned on this list for four days of in-person instruction, um forty-eight of our class sections in typical academic classrooms would have between seventeen and eighteen students in them at one time. And twenty class sections would have between nineteen and twenty-three students in them. Um currently, most of our academic classrooms have twenty-two desks in them. Um and those class sizes uh would primarily uh be seen in the uh seventh and eighth grade class sections. Those two grade levels are our larger grade levels in the school. Um the minimum spacing between students in typical academic classrooms, like what I just described, uh would be between four and five feet apart. Um when I spoke to my uh faculty about this, um th- those those were of of concern. Um the the number of students that we could see in a classroom um would would certainly be a majority of desks filled in some of those sections. And so that was the um a a concern for faculty in terms of management and their movement around classrooms and supporting kids effectively in those spaces. Happy to answer any questions you have that are middle school specific.
Sarah, do you know the hundred and six, how many are cohort C that haven't opted, or are they all doing two days a week already?
So that's a great question. Right now of that hundred and six, uh I believe it's nine are cohort C. Um and so that's why the data from those families in that form is really, really important for us, because then we'll be able to go back through that roster analysis and confirm exactly what the class sizes would be of that group based on um if some of those families that were cohort C remained there, if some opted to stay in their hybrid cohort, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, thanks.
You. Go ahead, Shannon.
Okay, I just, the letter that's going to go out to the families about this, will it include all this information about the spacing that's going to result? So that they have all that information to make their decision?
Uh it certainly could. At this point, it does not. Um but it certainly could.
Yeah, I think I think that should be disclosed because we're talking about less than six feet. So I think people need to know that so that they can make an informed decision for their individual children and family.
Mm-hmm. I appreciate that feedback.
Want to add too, just what we're finding too, Shannon, it's it's fine, we can we can make that happen, but we're really realizing now that we we are at six feet a lot. Um and that's been our goal from the start. But the the fact of the matter is, you can go to any any school any day, and there is often times when we're at this range, three to four to five feet, still within the state guidelines. Uh but it's certainly far from perfect. Obviously, this will increase the number of times that we're at less than six feet. But we're really realizing in the flow of the school day that we're not, you know, we're far from perfect on that six feet. I just kind of the deeper we get into the school year, the more we realize that there there are situations like that. Um but that being said, this does make it worse or different, I should say, and we'll uh we'll certainly include that information. It's a good point.
Yeah, no, and I think I mean, I think families appreciate that, right? There's a lot of movement in schools, and I'm sure everybody knows that it's not always six feet, but I think the fact that it is going to be going under that initial guideline that we've always been talking about is something that should be disclosed. Thank you both, appreciate it.
And and you know, Sarah and um Chase and Erin, because you know, these presentations have that information or are very clear. Maybe you might just consider not sending a parent of a middle school student, you know, the elementary and the high school or the Alden, but those slides that you described for middle school school students, I think you don't have to do additional work. You've already done the work. Seems really, it kind of lays it all out there. So maybe that's something you just consider either include this whole presentation or just the one for the school uh for the families that are getting the survey.
Thank you. I wanted to ask him, uh Sarah said that of the hundred and six additional students at cut at the middle school, uh nine are in cohort C, what's that number at Chandler and Alden? What proportion of the additional students are already in cohort C?
Um I don't have the exact number in front of me right now, uh but out of the forty-six cohort C students that we have, um a handful are students with active IEPs. I can get it, though, the exact number.
Uh yeah, I'm I was trying to pull it up as you were asking that question, and I would say it's probably around the same. I can look it up as we're continuing with the presentation. I have all of this information up. I'm just trying to locate the tab with it.
Okay, that'd be great. Thank you.
I just kind of want to comment right here that it's not just these families that are going to be impacted by the four to five feet. It's all the kids in the classroom that these kids are joining, right? So it's the whole population of the school.
For at the middle school, uh we're primarily seeing those higher classes of the seventh and eighth grade. Um.
So so will a message be going out to all parents when this occurs so that everybody's aware of the fact that they're now not at six feet? It might be four to five feet, or are we just saying that sort of happens already? So it's the same thing. I guess that's.
I think it's interesting. I I think it's worth, and I'd be glad to do it. Um you know, just sending a brief message out that you know, assuming this goes forward, that we're um that we do have this plan, it'll be implemented on January fourth, and yep, the implications are are that we're you know, some of our space, our spacing is is going to be compromised. So yeah, be glad to do that.
Okay, I just think that's valid because you know, we've said all along, there's not a school in the state that does three feet. And we're not talking about three feet, but you know, as we progress, it's just I want to make sure people full disclosure that, you know, that everybody's aware, the more kids in the building, the less distance we have from one another.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that that would also apply to uh whatever arrangements, changes there are going to be to arrangements for uh eating meals. You know, if that is going to have an impact.
If I can just jump back in just to um answer your question about cohort C and students on IEPs. Um out of the students I said forty-six K through two students in cohort C, we have two active IEPs.
Great, thank you.
Uh Alden is three.
Okay, great. Thank you very much.
All right, Jim, I think you win.
All right.
Microphone.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. Uh so moving on to the high school. Um just talk a little bit about the the this change and what it would mean at for both the middle school and the high school. Uh in in going to this next phase, there'd be no change in our building schedule, no real structural change other than adding some furniture, as Sarah said, to the middle school uh for lunch. Um pick-up and drop-off times uh will all stay the same, right? So there's no changes or impacts there. Um we have uh at this time identified approximately two hundred and four, that number uh a couple hours ago dropped to two hundred and one. Um because uh some students' plans became uh active today. Um and uh students to be considered for this plan, we currently have uh forty-five students at the high school that are high needs. Um and have been uh that number started uh in the mid-thirties in uh August. It has grown uh incrementally over the course of the fall. Um students for this program will be contacted in December. Um uh excuse me, just to contact it tomorrow, exactly the same time as the middle school. Uh we're asked for those responses to be back by next Wednesday. Transportation will move exactly the same. Um and returning forty days a week will begin uh on January. A difference, a a small difference at the middle school is that there are five, or from the middle schools, we have five hundred and thirty-four classes or class groupings at the high school, which make this modeling really complex. So at the moment, we've gone through all five hundred and thirty-four of these classes, and we have figured out what the max number of students could be in each classroom. Uh we do see in our um uh world language, English, math, social studies, science classes, numbers that approach twenty-one, twenty-two uh and um in a in a a couple dozen classes. Uh it's really important for us that we connect uh and understand with how with these families and understand who's actually going to come back and understand the implications of that as it relates to furniture and how we manage um seating in classroom o- on January fourth. Um we also have looked at some of not some non-standard uh locations that we can use in the building to help students be in the building if we can't physically fit them in the classroom. Uh that's an issue for us because we're approaching the end of the semester. Uh and so we really want to keep kids in places. Not all of our classrooms are the same, so we have a a max capacity in some rooms that we've determined uh that is uh not uniform across the building. And so if we need to uh if the max capacity of one classroom, for example, is twenty-one uh and that class has twenty-two kids in it, we're going to have to figure out a way to manage that until the end of the semester uh in late January, and then come up with a a longer-term solution uh from late January moving forward. Um we have uh similar to what uh Sarah had said before, uh we would be moving to between four and five feet if we had to uh get to around twenty students per room. At the moment, all of our classrooms have eighteen desks in them at the high school. Most classrooms are operating with sixteen desks. And largely, um the overwhelming amount of classes at the high school will be able to absorb uh these new students should they all come back uh forty's a week without adding furniture within the existing setup.
How many of your additional students are are in cohort C at the moment?
Uh seven of that two hundred and one.
Well, I'm impressed with all the work that you principals have done going through every single class and running the scenarios. That is not an easy task. So kudos on step one. Um and I know it's it's a lot of work and interfacing with staff, and um so thank you. And this makes, you know, this is a this is a great presentation. Um it's pretty clear.
If I'm going to add just uh two things from our faculty meeting today. Um. And uh uh there are some concerns, certainly about bringing back, we uh two hundred is a is a large number, right? It's a large number of students to bring back into the high school. Um it is effectively a about a hundred students a day is a way to think about it, a hundred more students a day. Um and we are, we do understand how, in some cases, how these kids will move, and there are, there will be some classes that will that will look like a normal school day, to look like the whole class is back. And so there are some t- some concerns about how we'll manage that in the short term and then in the long term. Um and we are near the end of the semester, and so you know, this is a time, and I think a lot of our faculty, it uh want our kids to come back because with three or four weeks of seeing some of these students every day, we can make, it can make a huge, huge difference. Uh as well as balancing that we do have some some rooms that are very small uh learning centers uh which have a max of six or seven or eight kids that are very difficult, which we may have to relocate kids. We relocate that class somewhere else in the building for the last couple of weeks, which is a disruption we will have to manage. Um and so I do think there's uh uh we will, we will certainly have a a few challenges that we'll have to manage in the short term. And then when we get to the to the second semester in January, it'll be another small shift uh on January twenty-fifth, and then we'll we'll be in a in a much better place. We'll have a lot of that, those wrinkles kind of moved out. And it's definitely, I don't want to speak for the principals, but it's it's been a total team effort uh with all the assistant principals and and guidance staff and support to get ourselves to this point and have these details uh for you here this evening.
Great, thank you.
Um I just wanted um to just take a moment because I know this is um little bit of a a shift and a change for the families of students, um you know, um with IEPs and even, you know, the five oh fours, and if there are families who are having um you know, some concerns or questions or things, we just want you to know that we are here to support you um through the transitions. You know, your contact people are your case managers, your liaisons, you can reach out to um any of the three team chairs, myself here in the special education office. I also wanted to let you know that on Monday, um we had a business meeting scheduled for CPAC as is. Um and with that, um I'm hoping to just touch and provide a little bit more detailed information about IEP specifics, um service delivery, things like that at that meeting. So um for any of the parents who are out there and watching, um the agenda with the Zoom link will be coming shortly to you, so please be on the lookout for that so we know how um to work with um individual cases that might need some additional supports.
Great. I do have one. This is just a lot to take in. Um and and I can imagine being a teacher, um it's a lot to think about. Does this need to be approved by the DTA? Does anybody know?
Yeah, Kelly, thanks. The I mean, sh- short answer is no. Um we're effectively just increasing the number of um designated high needs, high need students uh coming back to school. So it doesn't require any any um any approval. Uh I I would add, though, and I think it's really important that we, you know, we we are in constant collaboration, um not just with the DTA, but with all of our teachers. We had a whole round of um kind of town hall meetings and staff meetings over the last few days. So you know, we want to be on the same page. Um but at the end of the day, we we can, we can execute this change.
Okay, um and I guess it would be up to the principals, like if if well, you know, world language, I think was mentioned, Jim, at the high school, or maybe, yeah, DHS, English, math, social studies, world language, you said with the classes, it would be the biggest. So I guess what if someone in world language doesn't want twenty whatever kids? I I I don't know.
No, I I I think uh what I think what I meant to say there is that, you know, we we have uh we have capacity in each of those classrooms that we've determined what we think is the the max number of of students that we can safely put in those rooms at a distance of about four and a half to five feet between students. And so um we may have to come up with some non-standard ways of getting if where we have singleton classes, and sometimes those singletons could be you know, in a full-year course, twenty-seven to twenty-eight, we may, we may have to over the course of the rest of the year, as these phases continue, figure out some non-standard ways to to make that work. But but there are, there are options available to us, and and we'll take advantage of those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Um I just, yeah, maybe a comment, Kelly. Um you know, it's, it really does. This has been such a strange year in that, you know, twenty twenty on the one hand has gone so slowly, but it's also like things are racing along. And if you think about it wasn't until the very end of August that we actually had an agreed-upon plan to return on the hybrid model. You know, it was all hands on deck. There was two weeks of a a dedicated professional development in advance of students um arriving to start school. So the start date was really for most families was mid-September. Then you kind of get your feet underneath you, and you start thinking about well, what would be the way in which we could look at uh either flexing up and and flexing down? The administration responded to that discussion with sadly, there's not just one metric. We're going to have to look at a multitude of metrics. What's the risk in the community? What's the infection rates? What's the guidance? And then a month later, the discussion was, or two weeks later, well, what would be our priorities? And the the needs of our highest need learners were identified first, followed by our younger students. And there were the uh, of how we could uh progress from where we were to where we were headed. So on the one hand, this seems like it's moving very quickly. For many families, it's not been moving fast enough. Um, and I think for all of us, including all the uh, you know, faculty and staff as well as families. Um, you know, there's a lot of change and at the same time, it seems like a ton, you know, that this year will never end. So, so I just really want to commend the administration and, and continue to express my thanks to all of our um classroom teachers and all of the support um being provided to the students in the classroom. Um, thank you for working to try and line up with as best possible changing, very rapidly changing conditions and some really serious constraints. Thank you. Um, and I think everyone has to recognize this is, uh, you know, best laid, laid plans are subject to change. Um, the circumstances could look quite different on January 4th. Um, but thank you for the work going on. And I think we're trying to move in a direction. Now, I've spoken with many parents. I think we kind of have violent agreement about the objective. We just have differed on the uh timing perhaps, or the method that's being used to get to where we want to go, which is more students in person more. Um, but anyhow, I think uh great work, a lot more work required and, and thank you for the effort.
Yeah, I think there should be a huge party when all this is over for the administrators and the staff. Because this is just unbelievable amounts of work for you all.
Yep. Peter, Kelly, today's day 56, right, of the school year. And I mean, it, it does feel like an eternity, but it's still only day 56.
And it's incredible, you know, about where we've come from. That's, that's kind of a remarkable way to think about it. 56 days in.
Yeah, so and it's plenty of time left and, and um, you know, the, the, it's funny, there was a commissioner call today. I actually, I missed it, but I saw some notes on it. I think Danielle was on it, but the, the, the state's focus right now is getting districts who have yet to step foot in the school building, back in the school building. All right. And so again, I know we're, we have an imperfect model. Um, sort of no one's satisfied anywhere right now in the world. Um, but we need to understand that we're actually in pretty good shape, you know, relatively speaking. And uh there are kids, there are kids who literally haven't stepped foot in a school building this, since last March 13th. So we're making progress and I, I do appreciate everybody's patience. And this is not easy. I mean, this will give you a glimpse of what it's going to take to even have a conversation about going fully in person. The, the logistics that we've had to go through just this week for this, this small number of kids is almost overwhelming. And I'd argue that the staff is actually feels overwhelmed by it. Um, and I, I don't blame them. You know, I, I really don't. And so I, I just, we need a bit of a reality check. It gets, it gets real very fast when you're talking about this stuff. And so I'm, I'm amazed at what we got accomplished in the last seven days. Um, I'm excited about this, but I just want you to know it, it's a, it's a big lift. And uh, and we just have to, um, you know, we're going to keep our eye on the prize, but we're also, we also have to just stay, stay methodical and stay realistic about things. So anyway, that's it.
Okay. So I would like to flip the agenda because we have 346 parents watching and do public comment now. Because I'm guessing there might be um some feedback on this.
Yep. We actually have a lot of staff, um, mostly staff, I think, on this call too. So, um, do you want me to um?
Yeah, if people want to raise their hands, if they have public comment, I mean, we, we can. Yeah, I think it's a good time to do it.
Okay. All right. First one is um, uh, Caitlin Fawcett. Hi Caitlin. You're on mute, Caitlin. Caitlin? I'm gonna, I'll put her back and I'll um get back to her. Um, Danielle Bryan, Danielle?
Sorry, I unmuted it. Can you hear me?
We can now, yep.
Okay, um, I have a couple of questions for you. Um, I was wondering if you guys had any, put any thought into kind of killing two birds with one stone. When you send out your survey, could you also include something to all the families in the district to see how many kids would be potentially going back on your February 1st date? Um, just to kind of get a better idea of your class sizes?
So I'll, second, which is next question.
Uh, not answers, just questions?
Oh, I can give you an answer. I just didn't know if you want, if you had, do you want to ask?
Gotcha. Okay. Um, so you said that you're going to do these things, you know, possibly, and it's a wish list. What are the parameters to make these decisions? Like if seven people get sick, we're not doing this. If we're in a red, we are doing this. What are the parameters? And I know you said the classrooms are different. What is an average class size need to be to stay within the three to six feet apart? Thank you.
So I'm a little confused by one of the questions, but um the first one was about surveys. We, we're not, we're not going to mix the two, but it's a great question. We will be sending out kind of a broader survey um about a theoretical in-person return in, in the coming weeks, but we're, we're not going to, but, so we will do it. We're just not gonna, um, we're not going to mix those two, but that will be forthcoming. I'm not sure what um she meant about wish lists. Um, I'm not sure. I didn't use that term. I'm not sure. Did, can anybody weigh in on that and what, what the parameters would be if we're going to do it or not? I, I guess let me be clear. We are recommending that we move forward with this plan, this particular plan um from Monday, January 4th. And I, I can't see um us deviating from that unless there's some massive explosion of um, you know, of cases a, and, and, and um you know, in district. Um, so I, I'm sorry.
Don, I think, I think it's um, it's an unsatisfying answer and it puts enormous, you know, uh, pressure on our leadership, but unfortunately, there isn't one single metric which is going to be used to either flex up or flex down for any schedule. I mean, we've talked about that in the past, but it won't be if we hit X, then we'll do Y. Um, unfortunately, the circumstances are, as you've described, Dr. Antonucci, are changing. We have to consult many stakeholders to be able to evaluate uh where we go from where we are to where we want to be or where we need to be. So unfortunately, that's very unsatisfying, I think, for everyone, but there's no, um, you know, even when it came to the districts, everyone might remember the state changed the color coding system midway through. We all, we were very, in fact, Duxbury would be, I believe, red under a system that was in effect a month ago. But the state changed the whole system. So this is part of the uh, you know, the um framework under which you're operating. There's no single metric that's one established when uh, when these act, you know, when these changes take place. Is that right, John?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, yeah, yeah, absolutely. And I, I, I do want to say too, you know, even, again, it's been a shift, you know, especially from the governor's office, and I, I don't really think the governor's preventing good leadership to public schools, but they, e- even with the, with the health data blowing up um locally as well, by the way, statewide and nationally, in every breath, they're still saying we should be in school. Now, it's a little, little tough to swallow sometimes, but um, so it's going to take a lot is what I would say for us to um not continue to move forward or go backwards. So, okay, um, Allison Estebrooks. Allison?
Better unmute, Allison.
I'm sorry, I um, I unfortunately hit the low, the, raised the hand by accident.
No problem. Sorry about that. Suzanne Sullivan.
Hi there. Uh, thank you for having me on. I apologize in advance. I've, I've since raised my hand and felt a bit anxiety in preparation of my response, but I'll be candid as a teacher. I am, I am listening to this uh meeting as I listened to the last two. I have hired my colleagues that have come on before this one to share how things are going. And to be honest, I'm startled by what I'm hearing in this meeting. And I think that saying that you're aggressively looking at how quick you can bring students back is an understatement. What I've heard is that principals are going to email families tomorrow. And as a faculty member, I can't help but disagree with some of the points that have been brought up. Do I, and I truly believe all of my colleagues, want our students to be supported and want our students to be in the classroom and want our students to get the um the teaching, the support and the space they need to be successful? Yeah, I do. However, some of the items that have been brought up as concerns such as spacing, storage of furniture, lunch, snack time, staffing concerns. These are just some of the concerns and realities that all of the teachers would be facing as soon as January 4th, which also coincides with students returning from an extended break where possibly they have traveled, possibly there is um COVID cases rising. And once again, in the hands of teachers showing up daily, um, I, I think that it's, it's stressful, the speed that this is taking place. And I, I hope that I can eloquently say, which I've, I've pressed in, writing out my thoughts, talking out my thoughts, but now in here, the reality feels slightly changed. Is there needs to be more collaboration between teachers and administration and families in this process? And I think that we've done a really great job discussing this on Wednesdays, which are designated for our teachers to communicate, collaborate and address students of concern. I'll be honest though, that I think the Wednesday information has helped us highlight students that really are struggling. And in some cases, those students are not 504 IEPs. And in some cases, the aisle of 504 and IEP students are successful. And so the numbers that have been shared here, I know that this data is meaningful. I know that these steps are coming and that they, they do need to happen at some point in our school year. But gosh, I can't, I can't lie. January 4th does not seem like a timeline that seems appropriate at this time. And I, I want to be honest that I think the teacher input on these last couple of school committee meetings have shown that it's taken a long time, but that it's working currently. And a change like this would take a long time to adjust to as an educator. And we're given a short time to make those adjustments. Thank you.
Thanks, Susan. Uh, Suzanne, um, I appreciate the comments. I would just remind folks that it's about a month um to prepare for what'll amount to a very small number of kids in the, in the classroom. So I, I, I'm totally supportive of, of um, you know, moving the goalpost a little bit from pre-break to post-break, but a month in any industry is quite, quite a bit of time to prepare. So I would just, I just need to say this out loud. I completely disagree with that assessment. And uh, I, I truly, we are listening. We made adjustments today from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM, uh, just actually based on faculty feedback. But a month is quite a long time and uh every day that a, a student with special needs is at home is, is another day that contributes to what is a growing crisis in the, in this country. So. Peyton Conley?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
Okay, sorry. Uh, this is specific towards Chandler. I understand that, you know, each school is different. I did just want to say though, for Chandler, but I think we've been talking a lot about how um
Peyton, we just lost you.
Uh, Peyton, I'm sorry. I, I, I think I hit the wrong button. I apologize.
Can you unmute Peyton and start over?
Ms. Conley?
Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to talk specifically about Chandler. Ah, my computer keeps messing up. I might have to sign in on another computer. Sorry.
We can hear you.
Oh, you can. Okay. Um, I just want to talk about Chandler, how it's, the young kids aren't at risk. And I think actually Dr. Antonucci just said everything that I wanted to say in a way more elegant way than I was going to say it. But as far, I have two kids on IEPs. Both my kids are in Chandler, and I know you guys are all concerned about spacing and six feet. But at this point, a lot of us parents who have children on IEP are far less concerned with our kids getting COVID and far more concerned with their mental health, with their educational needs, with their personality changes. I obviously cannot speak for everyone on IEPs, but for a lot of my, my friends and myself who have a kid on IEP, I, I know it sounds awful. I don't, I don't really care about COVID and my daughter. I care way more about her mental wellbeing, her personality and her education. So for January 4th being an early date, it's a late date for us people who have IEP, who have special needs kids who need to go back. So again, it's not, it's not a question, just more of a statement about Chandler and how we're feeling. And that was it. And thank you for, for um trying to accommodate all these IEP kids who desperately need to go back.
Thank you.
Another staff member, Beth Nichols? Hi, Beth.
Hi, John. Thanks for having me. Um, I just wanted to, um, I wanted to first appreciate the transparency with um Sarah and Jim specifically because I'm in their building. Um, yeah, having these kids back, it, it does affect the six, the six feet. It does. It affects the six feet. Um, I'm just looking at my period one class of 32 kids for a full roster. And when I count everybody up and I exclude the cohort C, I'm looking at 20 kids and that is less than six feet. And, you know, I just think that it's important that the community know that that's what we're looking at when they're making their decisions. Because it doesn't just affect the high needs kids. It affects all of those families that have signed their students on to this hybrid system. Because now their kids have a different amount of exposure. So I think we have to take those other families in consideration. And secondly, I just wanted to say that I think it's important that we get kids what they need. And I wonder if a more natural transition might be at the end of the semester. So semester two starts January 25th. And if we had the time to plan out to January 25th, we could have systems in place and potential, um, I'm going to say COVID exposure over a holiday vacation would be more than two weeks out. And I wonder about the safety that that would provide, not only the families of Duxbury, but the staff. That's all.
Thanks, Beth. Thanks, Beth. I appreciate those comments. Courtney Lattalian.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Um, I just have two questions for you. I'm a parent of a student in Chandler. Um, my first question is, I haven't recently seen any emails from um you or the school or the department at health at large regarding any cases or known exposure to students during, or the during the schools large. So I was just wondering if there has been any recent cases, or we've pretty much stayed at zero for the last month or a little over a month. And then my second question is, for those classrooms where the additional kids are going to come into play come January 4th, will there be notice sent home to the parents of those other students?
Sorry, you mean the students, everybody else?
Yeah, that was my question earlier, John. Is everybody going to get notification that there will be additional students in the classrooms?
Yeah, yeah, I think we said that, that we do that. Yeah, absolutely. And I just, to the question about cases, yeah, I think we have, we're up to 13 positives in the district. There's a grid that's updated on a regular basis that's posted on the front page of the website. We have not been, and we've had, I mean, literally hundreds of kids and some staff, I would add, in quarantine because they're designated close contacts over the course of the last month and certainly two months. We have not been communicating out to the entire community every time there's a positive case. We got a lot of feedback early on that it was just too much information. So we've been really focusing on students or staff who have been identified and designated as close contacts and/or to the team or the classroom impacted. But, you know, we continue to have a lot of cases. There's a lot of cases in town right now. We're seeing the same spike, not necessarily the schools per se, but we, there's a lot of cases right now in Duxbury, and it's kind of the post-Thanksgiving surge that's happening all around, kind of all around the country. Hope that answers your question.
John, I just want to pop in and remind people to try to keep it to two minutes with your comments. And it's not necessarily a Q and A. I think we'll pop in when we can, but sometimes it's just leave a comment.
Okay. Allison Esther Brooks, did I? Allison, did I, did I not lower your hand, or did you, did you want to say something?
You know, I think my, I don't know if my hand was lowered, but I do have a question since I'm on. And maybe, I do apologize, I dialed in a little bit into this. So I'm just kind of tuning in about 15 minutes ago. Was there anything discussed about the elementary level and bringing them back? I know at the last school committee meeting, that was discussed as a potential. I wasn't sure. I have a third grader, and I also have a ninth and a 12th grader. But I will say, the amount of time that my third grader on her virtual days is stuck in front of the screen is just exorbitant. And I would just wanted to know what the plan was for that, if it hasn't already been discussed. And I apologize if it has.
Thank you. Yeah, I did mention that, I did mention upfront that we continue to kind of engage in that conversation. I put a date out, you know, might be a far-reaching goal of February 1st, you know, for our youngest learners, that might include all elementary students. And I think it's just important to have a target. But I, you know, just based on some of these even comments tonight and challenges, you know, I'm not sure it's realistic or not, but we're going to continue to move, move the conversation forward every day until we can get all, get all of students back. I think it's critically important to have that conversation right now. So I put that out there as a date, but it's certainly not a hard and fast. It's a goal, is what it is. So. The comes up is Colinen or Cullen? Hello?
Cullenens, you need to unmute if you have a question or a comment.
I'm going to put them back for a moment. Allison Frazier?
Hi, I just wanted to briefly say, like, I appreciate your response, Dr. Antonucci, that a month is a long time to plan. I know my husband goes to work every day on a construction site with 400. Nobody gave him a month to plan when he had to go back to work. And I know that's a very different environment than a school. But I also want to say, this isn't working for lots of kids. So it breaks my heart when I hear people say like, oh, this is working. It's not working for my kids. My kid's on 504s and my kid's not on 504s. It's not working. So I just, I commend the school committee for listening to parents and trying to do this as quickly as possible. I want it to be safe. I want it to, people to take the time you need to get it done. But we need our kids back in school. And it breaks my heart for teachers to feel like they're being put at risk because I'm super supportive of our teachers. But right now, I need to think about my children and watching them deteriorate, not just academically, it's mental health. It's how they're thinking about themselves, how they're communicating with their friends. Like, it is scary to me to watch it happen on a daily basis. So anything we can do to get them back in that building, I'm fully behind. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you. And I know this has been a really hard time for each of you on the committee, as well as all of our faculty and staff. And so I hope I have your back as much as I can, and I appreciate you.
Thank you, Allison.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I do want to say thank you for those comments. When I talked about a month being more than enough time to plan, and this is my opinion, of course, that for what we're proposing, a month is more than enough time to plan. I just want to make that point because it's, we're not talking about bringing back, you know, all 3,000 students. We're talking about a subset that we really have our arms around, and we know the impact. So the bigger question, bringing everybody back, that warrants, you know, that warrants time and maybe a month and maybe two. But that's a much bigger conversation, which we've been having, by the way, you know, since, feels like since September. So I just wanted to make that clarification. Kathy Leitner?
Hi, I just wanted to say, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I just wanted to say that speaking for all of Chandler, getting the kids back that need to be back in the classroom is very different for different families. And one person can't say what every single family needs. Certain families have certain restrictions and live with elderly parents and do not want to have their children's back, children back in the building. I think it does affect everyone when you bring back children that have special needs. And I, and I think it's important to have them in the classroom. However, I think it's really important to stay to the standards that the state is required. And having the restrictions from six feet down to four feet, down to maybe five feet, it's a slippery slope, and that really terrifies me, to be honest. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. I totally get the anxiety there. And, you know, we've talked about that. But I just do want to clarify for the committee that the state guidelines are actually three to six feet. And we're living, we're living in that guideline quite a, you know, quite a few places right now. But that is still a primary concern for us. I've talked about this in the context of a social norm, you know, what's, what's an acceptable social norm. So that is, it is a primary concern. But it's what I talked about earlier, too. We just have to, we just have to, we're balancing risks here, and it's just really not easy. Nora Hughes. Hi, Nora.
Hey, thanks for taking my question. I do have to say, as a teacher, I really think that taking the semester as the transition time would be so beneficial to everyone, especially in the planning and the transition from a teacher point of view. That just makes the most sense. I beg to disagree with you guys. I just think that's a ridiculous request. But I also want to know if families are not willing to take that risk of the proximity, will they be able to switch to cohort C?
Any, people can switch to cohort C anytime.
Okay. And then I think the implication that, you know, I hear what families are saying, and I understand. But I don't think the idea that kids being back in the day is, let's be honest, back in the building right now is not normal. It's not normal. It's, it's as close as we can get it, but it's not, it's not a cure-all, and it's not a fixative. And I just really want, I want parents to know that, like, people are doing their best, and it is a close approximation of, and it is certainly better than home in front of a video screen for hours and hours on end. But I just, this, we are, it's a global pandemic. And we need to know it is not, this is not normal. And I hope it does not become the new normal for an extended period of time. But I do think that, I think the stress load on the teachers will be transferred to the students. And I think that can't be understated. And so if you're looking for normal and you're looking for helpful, I would be very cautious as to what the strain is doing to your faculty. Thank you.
Thanks, Nora. Mike McGee?
Good evening, John. I just wanted to follow up on something I mentioned last week. And I didn't know if you had started to reconsider it with the new plans. Is the district considering the rapid antigen tests and using CARES funds to pay for that?
Same answer last week. No, not right now. We continue to look, you know, follow kind of what's happening with options, you know, free options from the state. But the answer is no at this point. Not that it wouldn't be useful, but A, we don't have CARES funding left at this point. And unless we get a free option, it's not something that's even remotely practical at this point. So we're hoping that the state provides more kind of free tests soon to districts. But not sure, I'm not sure that's likely. Jenna O'Donnell. Jenna, you had your hand, did I not put your hand down? Or do you have another comment?
Oh, I just had a comment. Thank you very much. I just wanted to say that I truly appreciate this new timeline. I have a child who is at Alden, who's on an IEP, who desperately needs to be back at school. But with that, I also want to say I have my child at Alden and a child at Chandler, who are both severely immunocompromised. And I think the committee knows, the faculty knows, that not all families are indeed adhering to these guidelines. And families have been very vocal to get this new timeline. And I just want to say, as a family who has children who can become critically ill, that I really truly hope with ski season upon us, holiday travel, that people will consider, you know, the health of faculty, staff, and students, and perhaps make better decisions this time around. And that obviously, if we don't, these timelines are seriously going to get pushed back. But I applaud all of the work that all of you have done, and I truly thank you for this news tonight.
Well said, Jenna. Thank you.
Lynn McKinnon?
Hi. So first of all, I, again, thank you all for, you know, the months and months of work and phone calls and emails you have all been amazing about taking. And my daughter's on an IEP, so she's at Chandler. And I greatly appreciate all the efforts to get her back into school. You know, we had her tri-annual IEP meeting yesterday. And, you know, one of the things that came up was she's so great in school. She's so attentive. But I see a totally different kid at home. Being not attentive, not being able to focus, not using those learning mechanisms that she gets in school. And it's really an environmental learning tool, learning environment that they're so used to. When they're in school, they, that triggers their learning. And it's, it's really just so different trying to get them to use those same mechanisms at home. And I guess, so most importantly, like Chandler, special education teachers, you know, Caitlin, Julie, you guys are so amazing. And we wouldn't be where we are with my daughter without you. So thank you so much. And thank you, all of you, for getting them back into the schools. I greatly appreciate it. Because teaching a special education student at home is so unbelievably challenging. It's so challenging, and it's certainly not something I was educated for. So I appreciate what you're doing. And I guess I just have a general question. Students, I have a lot of friends that have students that have reading difficulties. And I know, Erin, you said that you would be open to discussing with any parent that is finding it challenging to teach at home. Like, if they're on sort of the state mandated or state-provided reading assistance, does that kind of fall into that category of possibly getting those students into school? And again, thank you so much, everyone. You're amazing.
Thank you. I don't know how to answer that last question. Can we move?
I think right now it's just kids on plans, 504s and IEPs.
Title I services will continue to be provided in the hybrid model. And if students that are getting reading services in the hybrid need additional strategies or support, they can certainly reach out. But those students on receiving extra support through Title I will not be able to return fully in person during this particular phase, unfortunately.
Thanks, Danielle. Matt Leahy?
Hi, everybody. Thank you for your time. As always, I feel like I'm getting to know all of you as I've watched more school committee meetings this year than ever before. Dr. Antonucci, you sort of highlighted the workload it took over the past week to get these students coming back in January, the IEPs and additional students, and how that was, I mean, in your words, overwhelming, I think, to you and the committee. Just help me understand, as a parent of a fifth grader, a third grader, and a second grader, how I can have any level of confidence as we look forward through this school year that there's any chance that they're going to have more than two days in person? If it's so overwhelming to get the first group of kids back in January, which I think they should be back? Just help me, help me work that. Like, how do I understand that there's the capability for that to happen and the confidence in that happening?
Mr. Leahy, I can't give you an answer that's going to satisfy you. I mean, I don't know. I mean, I would just encourage you to listen to what people are saying tonight. I mean, it's, it's a very polarizing topic. We have teachers who are on one, on one side of this conversation tonight, who would bring up very valid concerns. We have some parents who want to come back tomorrow. We have some parents who never want to come back. So we're going to continue to have dialogue with everybody, take as much input as possible. We can handle logistics, but I'm just telling you, and I'd be, if you want me to start, you know, I don't want to lie to people. I'm trying to be transparent. It's a heavy lift to do what we're doing. And it's going to be a real heavy lift to get everybody back. And the amount, and what is partly overwhelming is the emotional side of it. You can hear it in people's voices. And so I'm not going to sit here and tell you I can give you any confidence that we're going to come back. I really hope we, we are. It's, it's, it's an aspiration. The state still needs to provide us some relief, but we're going to continue to work towards that goal. And I hope we can do it this year. But to suggest that it's 100%, I can't do it. I simply can't. Tina Cordier?
So it's actually Danny Cordier. I might hijack my wife's computer, sorry. Just a couple of things really quickly. First, I do want to say how much we appreciate the teachers that have been working with our kids the last, you know, several months, especially my youngest son, who is on an IEP and who is struggling. I think the one thing we haven't really talked about, though, is the kids being at home, the level of depression and anxiety, even anxiety in coming back in school. But I, you know, I have two kids that have always been very happy, happy-go-lucky. And, and they have really gotten to a point where it's, you can see the depression. You can hear it in their voice. You can see it in what they write. And so just to reiterate how important it is to get kids back. That being said, you know, That being said, you know, I do hold our teachers to the same level I hold nurses and other people that are just so important to our community. And there's so many people right now, you know, my teachers say that they're catching COVID themselves, but I would just say there's a lot of people in positions of equal, you know, rank, that are having to put themselves out there, they are going to work every day. I would think teachers are much more important in the community than a grocery store clerk or cashier, no offense if there's any cashiers on the on the call tonight, but I would think I would hold them at a much higher level than that, and I would hold them at a higher expectation than that, yet grocery store workers are there every day, the same cashiers ring me up every day, half of them are Duxbury students that down at Stop &amp; Shop. So I just want to reiterate that we've got to make getting kids back in school as quickly as possible a priority. I'm going to contradict that slightly. I do question the idea of having them come back, you know, five days after Christmas or seven days after Christmas, whatever it is. I don't know that we should wait, because I think every day counts, and I don't think we should necessarily wait till the beginning of the next period. But I do think it's important to at least wait 14 days, or at least a certain, a reasonable level from Christmas, the holiday, when people are going to travel, they are going to see more family, to make sure that we don't have kids coming back that are infected, and that we don't just make a mad rush to get everybody back, and then everybody's in cohort C two weeks later. Now, that's it, that's I just wanted to throw that out there.
Thank you, yeah, that's a great, great comment. I just want to one clarification, though, just about why it's different in schools. And I know you just use this as just an example, grocery store clerks, but the difference is is that our teachers mostly are self-contained, right? They're with they're with the same kids all day. And so you're not, even though someone out in a store or a restaurant is getting exposed to a lot of different people, it's not the same people for an extended period of time. And so that's the only reason it feels a little different to me. It's not, it's not to say it's insurmountable, but it's, I just, I do want to say that because it is a little different when you're in the same building, but I really do appreciate those comments, extremely, extremely thoughtful, thank you.
John, this is Shannon. On the mental health, in one of your recent newsletters, community, you highlighted the the number of people in the hall, would you just kind of highlight that for folks on this call, saying that's important that they know they have the resource?
Yeah, we, you know, we we have an incredible service that we pay for that's available to all Duxbury residents, it's not just school, not just school families, it's anybody in Duxbury, it's called the Interface Referral Service. It's a service out of William James College, which is in Newton, and it's a basically mental health referral hotline. So it's free, people can call, and basically what what Interface does is help families navigate the mental health system, which can be really challenging. So they're not service providers, but they help you, they help get you access to service providers and help with insurance and just kind of help with some of that, I'd say red tape or complications around trying to get mental health services. So I sent that out to the families this week, we've had for a couple of years, and it's actually, we don't use it a lot. I'm not sure why, so I appreciate you asking me to remind everybody of that. So we'll continue to send that out on a regular basis, because it's a tremendous service, and it's free to families, and we know that people are absolutely desperate right now for mental health service. So Shannon, thanks for that reminder.
And I know both Sarah McGuire and Jim Donovan put it in their newsletters this week, too. And I also want to applaud them on the the surveys, the student surveys, because there was a survey for the parents, and then there was also a survey for the students. And the way some of the questions were asked, you could tell they were totally trying to identify any struggling struggle issues with the students. So that was, I applaud that.
All right, Kelly, two more. Hands, Laura Gagel. Laura.
Hi, it's Laura Gagel, I teach fourth grade at Alden. I just want to thank everyone here that's listened to the teachers and the parents and trying to make it work for all the kids. I have been a grocery store clerk, and the difference is I could take a day off and know that someone would do my job, but it's different at being a teacher. It's just really hard to take a day off, and and I just want to thank you for upping the subpay so that more people will come in and try to do what we do. So thank you all, that's all I wanted to say.
Thanks, Laura. Cindy Daisy.
Hi, John, and everybody. Hi. Many of you know me as Senora Daisy, and I was the Spanish teacher at Alden, and thank God I retired in June of 2019. I have come out of retirement this year to help some students tutoring them with remote learning. I do think a lot of parents, and I have my master's degree in special education and certification in elementary and Spanish, et cetera, but I think what parents need to understand is Duxbury is not in a bubble, they do they know what's going on in other towns. I have two nephews, children in Braintree that go two, three hour half days, they have not been able to go back, and they're both on IEPs, but nobody is doing two full days of hybrid. I really think that we need to look at this, and I totally understand, but I think kids are resilient, they really are, I think parents are more anxious and make their kids more anxious, because when I talk to kids, they're all happy, they're doing their work, they know how to get on it now. I mean, after like week seven, I saw a complete turnaround that they could just go on, and they're showing me their Google Classroom and their seesaw. But I think it's really important, and I cry and think of my teacher friends at Alden and everywhere, but Duxbury teachers are kicking butt and working, I'm going to say 100% harder than some teachers I know in other systems, and I don't want to say the systems, and I just hope you take into account their anxiety and mental health also. Thank you.
Absolutely, Cindy, well said. Looks like two more. Kate Leahy.
Hi, everyone. So my question is for Dr. Antonucci and Kelly. So to piggyback off of what my husband, his comments and questions, and your response that it's an aspiration to achieve full in-person learning this year, I need you to help me understand what the plan is for our hybrid learners who will not return to the classroom on January 4th. What is the plan for them to add in some additional synchronous learning so that they can have more structured learning time as required by DESI?
Yeah, thanks for your question, that's something we're we're looking at, we know that the model, our model is going to, needs to evolve over time.
Dr. Antonucci, if I could just add that we had a meeting with the commissioner today, and we are meeting the student learning time requirements, and we're even more than what many school districts are that minimal requirement. So we don't need to increase that right now, we have both synchronous and in-person instruction that is happening, the way they discussed today, and the goal for many districts that are having less and more less synchronous and in-person and mostly remote right now.
Thanks, Danielle. Kate Benau. Hi, Kate.
Hello, good evening, everybody, thanks for letting me speak. I am in a unique position, because I have the opportunity to experience hybrid learning from both ends. I am a special education teacher at Duxbury High School, and I'm and I am a parent of a student at Alden and a student at Chandler. And I think it goes without saying that teachers and parents want students back in school when it can be done safely. I don't think anybody is arguing that. But what I wanted to say is, while I understand the rationale for not expecting our youngest learners, like my daughter in Chandler, to be in front of a screen all day on her remote days, I do think that more can be offered to some of our older elementary students on their virtual days. I've seen firsthand the success at DMS and DHS, students are making progress, they are getting curriculum four days a week, it's fabulous, they are learning, they are engaged, and I think that just a conversation around how we can do that for some of the older elementary students, I would love to be a part of it, and we have the technology to do it. So I just wanted to comment that I think that it would be fabulous if we could start to have those conversations around engaging some of our older elementary students on their day to return fully in person. And thank you to everybody here for all of the countless hours that everybody has put into making this work for the students of Duxbury. They are truly a gift, we love what we do, we love seeing them every single day, we want to see more and more of them, and we just want them to be successful. So thanks for helping us help them. That's all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
All right, Kelly.
All right. Let's move on. Our next discussion item is our second reading of the policy revision for the authorized signatures for the warrant.
Yeah, so no changes from last week, Katie articulated all the changes in that policy, and be glad to answer any more questions, but we'd recommend you adopt it if you are so inclined.
Okay. And then the next discussion item is the 2021, oh, our school committee goals. So I sent out a document to everybody, and the feedback that I got from you individually was, it looks good, so thank you, Peter. And if anybody has any other comments, if not, we'll we'll vote on that, and I'll get it to Chris Cass, so we can get it on the website. Okay, so action items, vote to approve the DGA policy, can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And can I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Who's going to be the first to sign every warrant? All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
And Kelly?
Aye.
Okay. Can I have a motion to approve our 2021 school committee goals?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
And the last, oh, the surplus technology equipment, John included that, it was mostly PC computers.
Just before, before moving on, might it be helpful, because we have a large number of both faculty and parents participating in this meeting, just read that first goal, because I think it relates everything that's been going on since March, and or just pick whichever one, if it's not the first one, the one that's most relevant to what we're facing as a both community and a school committee this year.
Yeah, no, it's sort of the lead in, you're right, Peter. The Duxbury Public Schools have been confronted with unprecedented challenge as a result of the closure of schools in March, and the return to school in September 2020 with an entirely new hybrid model to start the school year. As a result, the challenges for Duxbury School Committee and Goals are unique to the current condition we are facing. And so our leadership goal is the school committee will work with the district's administration to evaluate and refine operating plans in response to the changing public health conditions impacting school operations. The school committee, in conjunction with the town and community, will support the development of a funding plan to meet the needs of the district going forward, and then the rest is just our other goals. But yeah, I mean, we are this year, it's definitely in response to the pandemic. Is that, is that what you meant, Peter?
Yeah, just to set the context of what we're focused on, it's pretty obvious, but just to, yeah, it's different, obviously, it's been historically.
Yeah, usually it's just, you know, communication and the budget and, but it's definitely this year is much more challenging for for everyone. You know, and as far as communication for us, I think it is good for for the public to hear, the school committee collectively and school committee members individually will endeavor to be available for input and feedback from the community, and will advocate to Duxbury students in the public school district with residents and town leadership. These efforts will include the sharing of accurate and consistent information on the district performance, policy, and budget via timely web page information and public announcements, as well as regular attendance at meetings in school and community organizations. And as I've said repeatedly, all of us are available by phone to have conversations. And I actually had a community member call me this week, and she said to me, it's so great having a phone conversation, because I can listen in the meeting, and it doesn't have the same meaning, like, hearing you explain or having a discussion or asking you one-to-one about a particular topic is so much more meaningful than not than just sort of trying to guess from what you're doing from a meeting. So again, if anybody wants to call any one of us, we are here all the time, we're, well, not all the time, I won't answer after like nine o'clock at night, but we are available for you. Okay, so we were at a vote to declare the surplus technology equipment.
Yeah, so you have a memo, you have a memo in your packet from Cheryl Lewis asking you to declare some surplus, some equipment surplus. We, you know, because of state procurement laws, schools need to go through a process to properly dispose of equipment and or sell sell equipment. So most of what we're surplusing are is equipment that's well beyond its useful life or damaged or not supported anymore by by our vendors, most of them are vintage 2011, either MacBooks or IMAX, and as well as some printers. So Cheryl lays out all the detail, and I suppose, Katie, I believe we're going to try to put some of that out to the bid market. You know, some, there's actually kind of a market sometimes for parts and things, so but we do have to do this by state procurement law to properly dispose of it. Is that right, Katie?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. So can I have a motion to declare the tech equipment surplus?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
All right, that is everything. Our next meeting is set for January 13th, 2021, you never know what's going to happen in the meantime. So happy holidays, everybody, stay safe, and we're here if you need us. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I just ask a question? John, will you share the results of the surveys that are being sent out to parents this week regarding the additional students for? So we have an idea of how parents are reacting.
You mean share with us?
Yeah, that wouldn't be data that I would.
It's it's with us. And yes. Please.
Okay.
So motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, Julia?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Shannon?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye, everyone.